All right, thanks for joining us this evening in regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on October 10th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Tonight Pastor Jeff Isaac's gonna lead the invocation and Councilman George Capps is gonna lead the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for tonight, the opportunity for these public servants to come and to honor you with the gifts and the talents you've given them. Lord, we pray that you be with this meeting, that there be great wisdom in this meeting, you would be glorified. And Father, we thank you for these public servants and all the public servants here in Park City, what they do to, Lord, just take care of this community. Father, we pray protection over this community, pray protection over those who serve. Father, we pray that this would be a community where families can feel safe and it'd be a great moral place. Lord, we pray for those that are working on the education of the children, we lift them up to you, Lord, all the wonderful things going on in Park City. We just pray that you would be glorified in those. Or we thank you, that you love us, and we thank you most of all for your son, Jesus. It's in his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next one, the agenda is approval of the agenda. Sorry, we need to have Danielle call the rule, sorry.
John Hunter.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Gary Aldrich.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
A quorum is present, Your Honor.
All right, Jim, you wanna make a motion on the agenda?
Yeah, I need to move that we remove the minutes from September 26, 2017, regular meeting from the agenda and then add them back as item A1, noting in paragraph two that the mayor was not present at that meeting. Also, item A in the second paragraph, it references Mr. Bailey and that should actually be Ms. Bailey.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the minutes.
John, did you want a second then?
So we're taking that off the consent agenda and moving it?
Moving that to item A1 so we can approve it. Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is public forum, and we don't have anybody signed up for a public forum tonight, so we'll go ahead and start with our staff reports, and we'll start with Rick Norman, our Director of Public Works. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, October 10th, 2017. Wanted to let everyone know, October 21st, we have a scheduled shred-it day. This is a free service for the residents of Park City. This will be located at the west end of the parking lot here at the new city hall, from 9:00 AM to noon. Gives everybody a chance to get rid of the documents that they no longer need. It's gonna be a week from this coming Saturday, October 21st, from 9:00 to 12:00. Department comments, October 7th, we did, done our brush and limb day. Stayed pretty consistent most of the day, we ended up with 80 loads. We currently have about 10 cubic yards of malts that we'll leave up at the park for about 30 days, so if anyone wants malt, it'll be there for about a month. Prior to the garage sale, we did move items from the old city hall to the new facility here, where I think we had some desks and tables and chairs, so we did get those moved over. We did also set a memorial bench on the north side of 61st Street, in between West Parkview and Independence. This was supplied furnished by Gavin, the family of Gavin Anspahl. Just got that set today. In the street department, been busy trimming trees and Park City addition. Last several weeks, we've got about eight loads that we've taken down to the old plant. We did complete grading roads 57th, 58th Street, Fairview, Park Place, 73rd and 91st Streets. And in the water and sewer department, the average work orders per day for September was 27. Any questions?
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Rick? Not seeing any, thank you, Rick, appreciate it. Next on staff reports is our director, our finance director, Danielle Arribas. Danielle?
Mayor and council, I will be presenting your third quarter budget presentation. We're gonna go ahead and start off with cash balances. And we're gonna start off with general fund. Projections for general fund for third quarter of September 2017 are right on target. We should be around 1.8 million by September 30th, and we're right at 1.8 million, so general fund is looking pretty good. And I will go into detail about general fund here in the next slide. I'm gonna point out that the items that are highlighted are tax-leaved funds, and the items that are bolded, the funds that are bolded are budgeted funds. If you take a look at budget 16, right here, I can't see it. It's this capital improvement fund. You can see that the September 30th balance is $51,000 compared to last year at 2.6 million. We built this beautiful building and have spent that down. We have made most of our payments, we have a couple of outstanding payments, which is reflected in that balance because we have those funds encumbered. And that is what is left over in capital improvement fund. Also, our bond and interest fund is at 4.9 million. That is bond 30, it's his bond and interest fund. We're keeping pretty steady with that levy, we have not changed that, and that payment, our bond payment is about $2 million, and it goes out in November, so that amount will decrease in your fourth quarter presentation. Utility fund is looking pretty good. Our capital projects fund, right now you see there's a balance of about $500,000. That includes the temp note monies that we took out, I believe, three months ago for the funding of the village estates and the Saddle Brook projects. And the PBC Fund 801, that last year had a balance of 2.5 million, which was the bonded indebtedness that we took out for this building. We completely spent that down this year, so there's a balance of zero on that fund. Cash is down, and 80% of that is our new building. Any questions?
Not seeing any so far.
We're gonna take a look at general fund revenues. City's doing pretty well in revenue collection. We, out of alarm collection, September is normally at 90%, we are at 93%, so we're looking good in out of alarm taxes. Retail sales tax has been increasing 1% to 3% over the last three years. We are at 77% collection, normally we're about 75, so we're doing pretty well at a 2% increase over September of, over the last five years. Although last year, we were, we had collected a little bit more, 2016 was a good sales tax collection year. We're pretty close this year. Building permits, as you can see, building permits, we have a budget of $41,000, and we are at 65. People are building houses, and businesses are also building new buildings. Although we aren't quite as high as we were last year, we're still doing pretty well. And I think Jack can agree with me with, that we will be very close by the end of the year. The biggest anomaly, or the biggest outlier you will see is municipal court fines and income. We have a budget of 183,000, which is pretty conservative. Seeing as that, we have been holding at about 180 to 200,000 in fines every year, and this is over the past five years. We are at 97,000 as of September 30th of 2017. This is a shortage of 40-ish thousand dollars over last year. We did do a little looking into that, and citations are down. Staffing in the police department has not been at 100% over the last year. That has transferred over into a decreased amount of fines, which has translated into decreased income in court fines. Also, some great news, as you can see towards the bottom, there's an EMC dividend and a health insurance rebate, which we have itemized in our revenues and general fund, so that we can keep track of them. We received a $27,000 rebate in the summer, we talked about that. That's a rebate we get from our insurance company, our property and liability. It's a dividend EMC. I wanna say that we don't budget for it, but we normally get it every year. This year, it was 27,000, which was up 5,000 over last year, approximately. We also let the council know that the, we received a health insurance rebate, or we're going to receive a health insurance rebate, which we received last week, in the amount of 43,127. Something that we are going to be talking about later on in the council meeting as to the allocation of that, of those monies, which we decided to put into general fund. But that was 43,000, so that is about 70,000. We did not budget, that went into our general fund. Any questions about general fund revenues?
Not seeing any so far.
All right, expenses. So I don't know if you recall last quarter, second quarter, we were looking very, very well. We weren't spending as much. We have caught up. We've been paying bills on this new building, the new operating expenses of this new building are showing. But that being said, city staff has been very conservative. We have not spent any capital outlay in general fund. Our administrator, actually in the fourth quarter, no capital outlay expenditures are approved unless, unless we have administrative approval by Jack. So we keep an eye on the budget in the last quarter very, very carefully. Most departments in the third quarter are, if you see that 75%, that's above the September 2017. Normally, third quarter, we'd like to see under 75% trending. We see departments at 65%, most departments don't even get close to 75%. That is because we overbudget in the health insurance line, we always budget 10% most years as come under. We also have salary savings from being short-staffed, and we have a contingency reserve, which we don't spend. So 65% has been the trend, as you can see, most departments are, are being conservative and are staying under there. We do have one, one department, our largest outlier is actually governing body at 83%. And that is due to, for two reasons. Employee payouts, when we have turnover and an employee has accrued vacation or sick, anything of that sort, the payouts are paid out of governing body, and that's just a way for us to keep track of them, still in general fund, but in the governing body. So we had some turnover recently, and we've paid out some monies. The other item is the the housing incentives. We've increased the payouts on housing incentives, not necessarily paying out more housing incentives, but we are, larger homes are being built, so we're paying larger incentives to citizens for building homes in our city, so. Another outlier that has underspent, according to our projections, is our court department. Just a reminder, court had a position, had a two-position department, and for the first, for the second quarter of this year, one position was not filled. So there were some salary savings there, so. Overall, we're looking pretty good, we're at 67%. I would like to see us at 65%, but we are doing pretty well. Any questions?
Not seeing any, Danielle.
Okay. What I tell Jack is our baby, our utility fund. Water revenues are up over last year. This is again due to hot summer, increased water usage. We had some excessive use, a good excessive use here, we had a lot of people who were watering. And this, the increase in revenues also due to the 3% increase that was approved at the beginning of the year, so. Sewer revenues are up as well over last year. Also, this is due to a combination of the sewer rate increase, the base rate, and the increased water consumption. Just a reminder that the sewer rate is based on water usage in the first three months of the year, so. Just some important information that I would like to pass on to you about some of the changes that we've made in our, with customers in the, in all things water and sewer. We currently have 1,625 customers on paperless billing. That's approximately, approximately 50%, 56% of our customers. We do have approximately 60 customers who have opted out of receiving a bill at all. We have 701 customers on ACH, and that went up from 480. So we've had quite a bit of people sign up for ACH. We did increase the disconnect fee. Went from $35 to $70 several months ago, that was implemented in July of 2017. It actually affected customers in August, in the August billing and the September billing. We have yet to see a decrease in disconnects, it's actually stayed pretty, pretty much the same. We're hovering over between 50 and 70 disconnects a month. And we believe, we believe that over the next couple of months, citizens will start to see that, you know, $70 is quite, quite an amount in that the effect of that increase won't be for another couple of months. So I'll come back to you with the fourth quarter and give you some more updates on that. And then quickly, on, on the expense side, water has had some turnover. We've seen salary savings, but on the flip side of that, our new hires have had health insurance tier changes, which has increased cost of health insurance in those funds. We also approved a new water position this year, and we've purchased more water from City of Wichita, so we've had an increase in expenses as well. But overall, the fund is healthy and on target, and I think that the 3% increase at the beginning of the year was a, was a good, a good choice. Any questions?
Not seeing any, Danielle. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our chief of police, Chief Boston. Oh, George just lit up.
Well, I had a question for Jack. Jack, I was, I was driving down Broadway today, and I noticed that FMI, Wichita flag flying there. And you know, I remember very distinctly those guys coming and getting tax payments from us, and I would like somebody to ask them why they're ashamed of our flag.
Okay, I can give them a call.
Hey, if they, they didn't go to Wichita to ask for their tax payments.
Okay. We can do that. Go ahead, Chief.
Mr. Mayor and council members, the main thing I wanted to bring to you tonight is that the Kansas Bureau of Investigation released the annual crime statistics for 2016, just a couple of months ago. And I haven't had a chance yet to bring that to you, and that's mainly what I wanted to focus on tonight, was some of those statistics. The second page in your packet there, be the second screen up here as well, has crime index offenses. This is, when you see the crime rate, that is what this is based on. These seven offenses, forcible rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. Actually, arson is not calculated into the, to the rate, but it's, it's a crime index offense, but it's not counted into the rate, so it'd be the first six that you see up there. So I just put that up there. So the next slide that's up shows the overall crime rate for cities in Sedgwick County, and this would be based again on those six offenses, and it's the rate per thousand residents. So it is adjusted for population. These are not our department statistics, but they come from the KBI, so they're based on reports by each agency. I listed every agency in Sedgwick County that reports, except for, there were a couple, Wichita State University, couple of school district police departments, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office also reports separately. I didn't report those up here, because this is a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison when you're looking at the population difference. So this one includes Wichita, and as you can see, Wichita by far has the highest crime rate, or the rate per thousand residents of any city in Sedgwick County. Park City, however, is second. The next slide takes out Wichita, so this kind of gives you a little bit of a zoom in when you take out Wichita, and you could compare the suburban cities a little bit more readily by looking at this. The slide unfortunately took off the cities. I think there was a problem with the version of PowerPoint that we have here on the computer, but the handout that you've got also shows the cities there off to the right, so. The next slide shows 911 calls. And these are cities other than Wichita, so all the cities in Sedgwick County other than Wichita. Again, the slide here unfortunately took off the list of cities, and it's on the right-hand side, but Wichita by far had the highest number of, I'm sorry, takes Wichita off of this slide. So the 26,253 that you see is Derby, which is the second largest city in the county. Hayesville was number two, their population's about a little over 11,000. And Park City's number three. You can see we're just around 1,900 less calls in Park City than Hayesville for the year. The next slide is violent crime rate, and again, this, the rate is the rate per thousand residents. Wichita, as you can see in this bar graph, again, I apologize for the numbers not being up there, but you've got the packet in front of you. But for the audience or those that are looking at home, the bar graph on the far left, the green one, is the city of Wichita, so Wichita by far had the highest crime rate of any city in the county. The next two in order are Mays and Valley Center, and then Park City is the fourth. The next slide. This is the overall crime rate. I think we're, maybe we're repeating here, I'm not sure. The overall crime rate, which again is based on the six offenses, and it's the rate per thousand residents. So then we could try the next slide here. Okay, if we could skip ahead to the one that says violent crime rate at the top, I think we'll be on track. Well, in your packet, the slide that says violent crime rate, again, is per thousand residents, so Mays being the first, Valley Center the second, Park City's number three in the county. The next slide, or next one in your packet, would be forcible rape. Hayesville and Park City had the, and these are numbers, actual incidents, not the rate per thousand residents. So Park City and Hayesville had four, followed by Derby, and then it goes down from there. These are the only cities in the county that reported forcible rape, so the others are not listed because they were zero. The next one is property crime rate, and again, this is per thousand residents. You can see that Park City had the highest property crime rate if you take out the city of Wichita. If we put Wichita in here, that would be, it's much, much higher than Park City. So again, this is, I took that out for the purpose of scaling it to show you the suburban cities in Sedgwick County, which is a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison. Next slide that is in your packet is auto theft, which is part of what drives our crime, our property crime rate, is the auto theft rate. Last year Derby had 23, Park City had 22, and then it goes down from there, as you can see. The sheriff's office for the entire county, I believe, had 23 auto thefts reported. So we had quite a spree here in Park City in the last year. The next slide up would be theft. Again, this is cities other than Wichita, which the first three are in order by population. Derby's the highest, followed by Hayesville, and Park City's number three. And the next slide in your packet is traffic citations. This is a three, I'm sorry, a five-year comparison of the number of traffic citations issued. You can see starting in 2012, and then through 2016, you can see that there was a very large drop from 2012 to 2013. This was the time period when the layoffs occurred across the city, and we lost some officers off the street during that time. There was a period of time when we were short. Since then, we've rarely been at full staffing over the last four years. There've been brief periods where we've been fully staffed, but those have been very short-lived. The next slide in your packet is traffic accidents across a five-year period. And you can see that to some degree, it mirrors traffic citations. You can see the number was a little higher in 2012, dropped down, but then it's been creeping up ever since. Last year was a bad year. We had the construction zone going on, on two of them actually, so that contributed quite a bit to our number of accidents for the year. Finally, I just wanted to end with a, there's a couple pages here that give you a little bit of a summary of where we're at as far as our staffing situation. We, the police department has 17 total authorized law enforcement positions, that includes me all the way down. Right now, we have two openings, which are being advertised, we just got them advertised here in the last few days. The we have one police officer just hired, just started October 2nd, and just started the academy, so he won't graduate until January. We have one police officer that just finished field training and just got out on his own very recently. Another one that's in field training, he's got 70 days is the normal period for field training. That's the, the standard period of time is 70 days. Could be a little longer, a little bit shorter, but it's always roughly 70. He's got 49 days remaining. We have one police officer right now is on emergency vacation leave due to a family emergency out of the country, and is gonna be gone for three weeks. We've got two police officers who are in the National Guard, and I know I've mentioned this before, I only say it because it does affect our staffing situation. I also always say that we're proud of them, and we're proud of their service, and I also always say that we're proud of them, and we're proud of their service, and we gladly make up the difference, but that does affect our staffing situation. The next slide is the last one in your packet. Other things that have contributed to our shortage during, as a result of the layoff, we had, I won't say this was, this was not entirely a result of the layoff. We were at one time at 19 authorized sworn positions. We had one during the layoff not replaced, and then another one that just was not, the person left, and it was not, that was never filled again, so around roughly 2012, we went from 19 to 17. That's, that's a rough estimate of the period of time, because they didn't leave at the same time. We have 17 positions, which includes one detective right now, so that detective is included in the 17. At one time, we did have two detectives included in the 19. We have police officers right now who are working 12-hour shifts and days off and overtime in order to cover, when I say 12-hour shifts, I mean four hours of overtime, and that is to cover our basic, provide our basic coverage, which is two officers on the street at any shift, any particular time. We also have a shortage in administration. We don't have an administrative lieutenant right now. That's affected our hiring process, makes, it slows things down. It's affected our grant application process. We started in to apply for COPS grant, that's an acronym for a federal grant, but it would have provided another police position for us that was funded, the large amount would have been funded by the federal government. We couldn't complete that process in time, just because it fell about the time that we moved into the building as well, so, which is a good thing, but it did interfere with the process. We also have one code enforcement officer opening, which is advertised as well. That is, is a result of that person put in for police officer, and he's the one that's at the academy right now, so we're trying to fill that position. I would, I presented with a lot of facts to you tonight, not a lot of explanation. Hopefully, over the next couple of weeks, couple of council meetings, I'll be able to provide a little more explanation, but I would be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Tom?
I have one. Statistics, 911 calls, and when we respond, we respond quite significantly outside our jurisdiction.
No.
No, when we get a 911 first responder, we back up the county, we back up other jurisdictions if we get a call. Does that go against us?
As far as our 911 calls?
Well, if they, if the officer responds to an incident in another city, because we're the only one on duty in the area, or we go to the county, does that count as one of our 911 calls?
It would, yes.
So, we may be taking some hits for other jurisdictions?
We would. I'll just say that the number of times that we respond outside the city has vastly dropped over the last three to four years.
Okay.
Largely because other departments have added people, also because we've been short, you know, we have not been able to respond. So, it's kind of a combination of, they have, other cities have kind of added more, where they haven't had to ask for help. We haven't been able to help as much either, so it's kind of a balance there, but the number of times we respond outside the city is, has vastly dropped from what it used to be.
There's a trickle-down effect, and I wanted to make sure that some of our reported numbers may be from somewhere else, and so there's an opportunity for that to happen somewhere else to another jurisdiction too.
Right. And, and you are correct, it would be included. I'll just tell you that the number would be very, relatively very small.
Okay.
I know that's a concern, it's always a concern in other communities, and I understand that, because we're the ones here who are funding our police officers, and we want them to provide services primarily in our city, not for another jurisdiction. But we have cut back on that, both by choice and by the fact that we're not called as often to do that, for the reasons that I mentioned. They do respond as well to our city. I would say that's probably up, from what I see in here, from what it used to be, but I would have to look at the numbers, you know, to really give you a solid answer on that.
The numbers are the facts that have been presented, but they could be skewed a little bit, is what I'm saying.
Okay. All right. Okay, are you getting Tom? George?
Well, on accidents, up on 135, we've got a pretty good scratch in that. Are those accidents up there, are they go against us, or do they go against the state?
Almost all of those are worked by the state. Occasionally, almost all of those accidents are worked by the Kansas Highway Patrol.
And when we work them, it's on us?
If we work them, they would be counted on us, yes. There aren't that many that we work. There are some occasionally, because KHP has been very short-staffed in Sedgwick County, and there are occasions where we do work an accident up there because they're not available.
Well, I know back during my days, third shift, a lot of time, we got the accidents. So, I just wonder if they's counting them against us?
That would be, if we're the one who actually fills out the accident report and sends it in, then yes, it would be counted against us.
Okay. Don't see any. George?
Yeah, chief, I have a question for you. In comparison to past years, as far as the overall, overall crime rate in Park City, do you see it staying the same, going up or going down in comparison?
It has been far worse in years, if you want to scroll back, let's say the early Of course, you'd have to adjust that for population, because Park City was smaller, but if you looked at the rate, you know, the rate per thousand, it was higher than it is now. It's been trending upward. I can say this, it was even in the newspaper here a couple of weeks ago, because the stats came out, but across Kansas, crime, particularly violent crime, is on the rise. That's a trend all over the state, it's not just here.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Not seeing any more questions. Go ahead.
Do you say the KBI put these stats together?
Yes.
And they went strictly on, on calls to the agency, or?
Oh, let me clarify that, Mr. Capps, if I could, that, the 911 calls, that's the one portion of this report that did not come from KBI. That came from Sedgwick County Emergency Communications. So, all the, all the crime statistics came from KBI, but the 911 calls were from dispatch.
Because I know at one time, at one time, they put out those crime statistics in, in the newspaper and stuff, and we got a lot of calls, and at that time, they, when you looked at it, they were going by, by zip code, and of course, 67219 takes in a big chunk of Northeast Wichita, in which their crimes were being attributed to us.
Right, and this is by the reporting agency, so what you're looking at is by the police, the city police department.
Okay.
Not by, and I understand what you're saying about the zip code, that, that's not the case here.
Well, that might have been the newspaper putting it out, but they, they showed us having a terrible crime rate. Thank you.
Okay. Not seeing any more questions, chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Melvin?
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as stated.
And Jim?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. That brings us to new business, item A1, which was the removal of the minutes of the September 26th regular meeting. Jim, did you want to cover those adjustments that need to be made to those minutes that you had?
Yes, okay, we had the, we were removing item A, and we were adding an item A1, that in the second paragraph, it referred, to correct in the second paragraph that the mayor was not present at the last meeting, and item A should refer to Ms. Bailey instead of Mr. Bailey, also in the second paragraph, and to amend, amend the minutes therefore.
Okay. Did you want to make a motion?
We, yeah, I move that we, move that we approve those.
All right. Bailey?
Second.
Okay. Brandy, sorry. All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight-zero. The next item on the agenda is item A, which is consider the appointment of Samantha Miller as the new treasurer of the city of Park City. Samantha's here this evening. I believe everybody got a copy of her resume in the packet, and the council president and I sat down and interviewed her last week. John?
If you want to introduce yourself first, let's go.
Go ahead.
I'm Samantha Miller. I've lived in Park City for about two and a half years now. I work at Coke Industries as a tax accountant, and looking forward to this next adventure.
Okay, John?
I'll make a motion to approve Samantha Miller as the Park City treasurer.
Yeah, George?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes eight-zero. We're going to take just a second and let Daniella swear in our new treasurer. Samantha, I just want to tell you thank you for serving the community and stepping up to serve this role in the city. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, that will bring us to item B, which is consider changing the funding source for the approved phone recorder for the police department from the voice products at a cost of $11,997 to be paid out of the 2017 general fund police department capital budget. Daniella, do you want to explain why we're doing this, or do you want me to do it?
I'll do a quick explanation.
Okay.
That's okay. Two council meetings ago, Police Chief Boshin explained the need for a new city phone recorder system. He suggested paying a portion of the phone recorder system out of his budget, the general fund capital outlay police budget, with about $8,400 of that $12,000 cost to be paid out of the MTBE fund. That was approved 5-3, with consideration of a, of future, excuse me, let me back up a little bit. That was approved 5-3. There was discussion about a health insurance rebate that the city was going to be getting. That money came in and was unable to be deposited into MTBE, as MTBE is a non-budgeted fund. What we would have to do was deposit into general fund and okay, by council, a transfer to MTBE. That would be a double expenditure, per se. So, what we decided is if we could, we went ahead and deposited the $43,000 rebate into general fund as a revenue coming in, and we would like to change the funding source of the previously two items that were approved to be paid out of MTBE. The first one was the phone recorder cost. So, what we would like to do is change that funding source, instead of MTBE, to be paid out of the 2017 general fund police department capital outlay budget.
So, we're kind of looking to undo what we did, because we can't, like we said, we can't put that money directly into the NBT fund, because then that creates an expense, as silly as it may sound. So, what we want to do is change those two approvals to come out of the general fund. We deposit the check into general fund, those remaining balances go into carry forward, and we leave the MTB fund alone, because that was one of the things I know council was concerned about, using that, and we were looking at replacing it with this. So, I felt like we needed to come back, revisit these two items for a different funding source, so we in a sense can do the same thing in the general fund, and we don't touch the MTB fund. Tom?
In the past, we have gotten a violation in our annual audits, and this resolves that issue. I mean, by going this way, it will fix it, so that we have a paper trail. So, we're not setting ourselves up for a violation when we have our internal audit done?
What type of violation?
Oh, they've gotten us for, I can't remember exactly what it said, but it had something to do with the way we allocated dollars.
Okay.
Versus spend them, and...
First thing that comes to mind is, that is why we're not directly depositing it into MTBE, because I, I think actually, now that you say that, I think that's come up in the past, where we've deposited into a fund that we really, we didn't have the authority to. We had to undo the deposit, put it in one fund, and then get approval from you to get a transfer to that fund. The reason we're not going that route is because once we transfer out of general fund, it'll be a $43,000 expenditure, and with our tax lien and increased expenditures, we just, we don't want to reach going over our budget. So, what we'd rather do is just spend the money, put the money into general fund, spend it out of general fund.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yes.
I just don't want to get a violation next spring, because we went out and did something we shouldn't have been doing.
No, this, this hopefully solves it.
Melvin?
I'll make a motion that we approve this, but I've got a question.
All right, hang on just a second. We got a motion, does somebody want a second? Gary?
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead, Melvin.
How did we come up with this money in the general fund for the police department? And why didn't we do that in the first place?
Just because we're using the $43,000 check that we'd done a half before.
We're using the 43, we're putting the $43,000 into the general fund, which is going into the police general fund?
Into the general fund, and then we're spending from the general fund. Instead of the MTB, and then putting the money into the MTB fund, which then would cause the violation that Tom brought up. And it also shows that there's an expense, although we know it's not really an expense, because it's cash that came in, but when we put money in there, it will become an expense.
So, the $11,000 is coming out of the $43,000 rebate check for the insurance?
Actually, it's only, it's only $8,400. The other, yeah, $4,000 is coming out of the, chief already had that in capital outlay, so it's $8,400 added.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And the motion passes seven-one. That brings us to item C on the agenda, which is consider changing the funding source for the four police officers at a $2,500 each bonus of 10, for a total of $10,000 to be paid out of the 2017 general fund police department personnel budget. This goes right back to what we just talked about, we just talked about undoing what we had done before, with using the MTB fund and using the general fund, as we've deposited that check into the general fund, and then have a carry-forward balance for the remainder of those funds. Gary?
Make a motion, we approve item C, changing the funding source to the general fund police department budget.
Okay, Jim?
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And the motion passes six-two. And that brings us to item D, which is consider an approval with the contract for Channel 7, and digital PR coordinator Jesse Walden. Jesse, did you want to come up? Jesse, I'll let you introduce yourself real quick.
I'm Jesse Walden.
And Jesse has been helping cover Channel 7, just because we had a little change in personnel in there, and we haven't had anybody fill in that spot, so we think it'd be prudent at this time to bring Jesse on and actually have him cover the Channel 7 for him. And then we're also talked about having him take on some of... And then we're also talked about having him take on some of the social media activities as well. So most of the things that you've seen on the screens, the graphics that have been put up, those have all been done by Jesse. Also working through some of the, the sound challenges and getting the hard drive installed and up and going to get Channel Seven back online has been Jesse jumping in and helping for us. George?
Well, I've got a couple of questions in economy. How many, where did we post this for request for polls on this?
We didn't post it.
You didn't post it, is there a reason why?
Just because Jesse's been filling in covering it. That's the reason why we came back.
Isn't, the way we do contracts, isn't it? That's not the way our policy's been working.
Doug, would you be able to answer that?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I don't know what policy you're referring to. There's no requirement that the city do request for proposals when it retains what amounts to professional or technical assistance.
Okay, well, I'll go this way then. I, I looked at the deal, I never saw a resume. I know twenty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money for a year. And I know that Channel Seven has not been working. It hasn't worked up till then and tonight I had someone check it. At seven oh eight, it started with the audio of the meeting, pictures of sports and then no audio, but pictures of brush and limbs. And then at seven ten, it went a black screen. And then back at seven eleven, it went to, went to the beginning. And you know, I think we're getting the cart before the horse. I, I'd like to see him show us that he can make this thing work before we commit twenty-six thousand dollars a year to it. Now, you know, my job, excuse me, Jesse, my job is look out for taxpayers' money. And I would like to see this work. I haven't seen a resume on you. I don't know what your background is. I, you know, usually on our contractors, we get this information. We get where they work, what work they've done. I've seen nothing. I, I can't support this. I, I might later if we can make this work. But right now, I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
Okay. Melvin?
Now, is Jesse going to replace Bill, is it?
Yes.
Now, this is happening, and what, did we pay Bill? I mean, was it?
Dana, you want to come up and give the balance for Bill?
From the top of my head, I would say it was between eighteen and twenty. And the increase that we have projected with having Jesse do this is because we are wrapping in all of the social media, which includes Facebook, Twitter, our website and the sign. So that, that's why the contract would increase.
I think we're at eighteen thousand with Bill.
Who was doing them things now? The Twitter and the.
Staff has been divided.
It has been divided up among staff and a lot of that had been done by our, our court clerk. Part of it has been done by me. I would still be involved in, in the process, but not actually doing a lot of the graphics and things. And I have seen Jesse's work, I've seen his videos and I've seen what he's done for us in the period of time. And it has been good work.
George, does you have any more?
I, I think we're, we're taking off on a different trail here. Usually on contracts, you know, we send out a request for proposals and see what we can get, see what kind of talent's out there and what they're going to charge us. But this time, we never done that. You just said, wham, bam, you guys approve this. And I've thought before about just dumping stuff in our lap and saying approve it. And I, I, I don't know why we didn't go out for, to look and see what's out there. No reflection on you, Jesse, at all. But I don't understand why we didn't do that.
We can do that.
I think we ought to. You know, I'm speaking to the taxpayers. We might be able to do it for half of what, what this is. We don't know. And we might come back and, and beg him, you know, will you do that? But I don't know. But we never tried. I don't understand why we didn't try.
Let me get council members and I'll come back to you. John?
What, I guess I just would ask a little bit. What, as far as Jesse, I know he did a lot of, I've saw him a lot during the construction of the building. I just want to understand what was the role he had in, I guess, putting together the wireless infrastructure, the, all the software and stuff within the building. I mean, I just, I, I feel like there's some value to that, but I, I don't know really what, what his depth of, of putting all that stuff together was.
Jesse, you want to answer that?
Yeah, so I have been helping out with IT here. And I mean, a lot of it really has just been troubleshooting what was originally installed. We had a lot of problems initially. I'm sure that was fairly obvious with just bringing microphones out and everything. But yeah, I mean, it's really just been a lot of troubleshooting and getting creative with ways to make, you know, what different people want happen. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just, that's why I just kind of wondered. I mean, I feel like there's a lot of value in institutional knowledge. And I mean, as far as putting it together where we're at, I mean, from, from the beginning. Sometimes if you can hit the ground running, there's a lot of value in that. And I'm just curious. I, I've been down in the basement, I know there's a lot of wires down there. There's a lot of wires and a lot of blinking lights. So I'm just curious, I mean, what, what that role was. Thank you. The other thing, I guess, I'm sorry. I, I also, and this may not necessarily be something to you, Jesse, but at the mayor or staff, I mean, I feel like this has been several years ago when we brought on the recycling stuff. I feel like we need to do probably a better job social media wise and, excuse me, on Channel Seven, promoting some recycling and some things like that, that, the services that we provide. So I guess I would just ask that whoever ends up doing it, that we do a little bit more in this way.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Tom?
I have one question and there's a diminishing return on what we're getting out of twenty-seven, or on Channel Seven. Unless you have Cox, you don't get it. AT&T, The Dish and all them don't have it. What can we do and could that be part of his job description? Go make us, see if we can get in on that, get AT&T to start doing it?
Jack?
Or I, I don't know. I mean, how do we work that?
Jack, you want to see if you can tackle that and then also your comment you had?
Okay, I'll, I'll handle that, the last part of it. One of the dilemmas we had is that our current contractor could not continue. There was a big pressure to get Channel Seven up and running. We had difficulties in the contract with the contractor. A little bit of engineering was, was a problem. Jesse was involved in getting that straightened out or he would probably still have mics that are not working. He worked very diligently in doing that. The system we got there is totally new. It's a state of the art system. I felt that if we brought somebody new in, it would be a big world to them because it's, it's brand new stuff. And, and he was here from the very beginning to help build it, put it together and making it functional. We still have a few burps in the system and as George pointed out. Hopefully we can get those worked out. But people that do this, this is not, other than somebody working for one of the big TV stations, it's going to be very difficult to lure one of those people out to do our Channel Seven. So, you know, we, you know, our goal was to get, keep it going, although it's not perfect yet. And, and with Jesse's knowledge and helping put it together, even if we got somebody new coming in, we may still have a problem, it's not a bigger problem because they don't understand the equipment and how everything operates and where this wire goes and what that hooks up to and so forth and so on. So it was felt that this would be the, the better course of action. Plus, we felt that our current system of website, social media, Facebook, Twitter, all that wasn't operating and doing what it should do to inform the public of what's going on. Also, I think you realize that graphics play a big role in, in media. For example, this is, this right here was done by Jesse, very professional. The previous Channel Seven operator could not come even close of doing that because he didn't have the, the skills in graphics and so forth. So Jesse brings with him all the, the graphical skills that is needed to really do a first rate job. Plus, we're putting everything together in, in one deal. It's very rare that you find somebody that can do social media, website and Channel Seven. Now, we can go out and get somebody to do Channel Seven, but I don't know if whoever we get can do the social media and the website and that too. So that's why we went ahead and, and are pushing this right now, this evening. Now, as far as AT&T, this service that we have is given to us originally by Cox. Cox is paying for it, Cox paid for the equipment to do it and so forth. I don't know of any other city in Cedric County that has anybody other than Cox because Cox is the only one that I know of that provides equipment for cities to do their Channel Sevens.
I know.
Best I can do on that.
We've been using YouTube as well as a, as another way of getting it out. Another thing I'd point out is while this is a contract, I think the important thing to look at is there's a thirty day out at any time. Thirty day written notice. This is not a twenty year marriage or commitment to that level that if either party is dissatisfied, it simply is a written notice and it can be ended within thirty days. So I think that's another part to look at too. So if we're dissatisfied with the services that we're receiving, we do have an out. It's, it's, we are not committing ourselves to an entire year that we would be stuck with something and not be able to, to move forward. Jesse has helped us out tremendously in getting us going. And I think you'd do fine in this position going forward. And once again, if we're dissatisfied come the end of November, we could certainly give a thirty day notice and end that contract.
Ms. Mayor, I look at it like this. We have a race car driver, that's a mechanic as well. And that's kind of what that position is. You can get somebody that can go in there and turn, turn knobs and stuff, but if something breaks in there or, or goes haywire, you need somebody that, that knows the system and how to plug it back in and get it going again. And I think Jesse has those skills that he can do that. Whether or not we can find somebody else with those combination of skills, it's going to be very difficult. And we might be months before we get somebody back in there if they can even comprehend what's in there to get up and, and Channel Seven running again. So our goal was to keep it going as best we could.
All right, let's go back to a couple of council members and then Dana, I'll catch you. Gary?
I think Jack and the mayor have pretty much summed up what I, my feelings were. I don't think there's any substitute for somebody coming in at the design level and at the installation level of a system is intricate and complex as what we have here. And being able to troubleshoot that system and know the ins and outs of the peculiarities that system and what to do in any given situation. Because in the troubleshooting process with regard to whatever system it is, you learn more about that system's intricacies than anybody coming in ever will. Unless you end up having a whole lot of problems when they come on. And I thoroughly agree with the assessment that Jack has laid out. And I would like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract with Channel Seven and the digital PR coordinator for Jesse Walden.
Jim, did you want a second for discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to second for discussion.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, just some general observations because I really appreciate what, what George brought up. But here's my kind of take on it. As the guy that's been solving the problems standing in front of us for the last two months, he's, he's been the guy doing the job. So the improvements are quite notable. Seems like this is a process of maybe formalizing what he's already been doing for us, noting the thirty day language in the contract there. So Doug and Dana, I know HR issues are sensitive. So would it be okay for him to talk about his resume and what's being done to address the Channel Seven issues you brought up just a minute ago going forward? Would that be appropriate to discuss?
Well, first of all, I would say that he is not an employee, he is a contractor. Our previous Channel Seven was contracted as well. So it, it's not an HR issue.
Okay.
Secondly, what I would like to address is the fact that a lot of the discussion has focused around Channel Seven. And I would like to speak up for Jesse at this point and let you know that most of the social media and the website and those things have been done by a staff who is no longer here. And Jesse has stepped up for that as well. And his skills have been evident. And I would just say that, that, you know, we have been utilizing Jesse in this period of time and we do not have someone to fill that space at this point either. So that is why we had suggested Jesse as well. Because we have an immediate need and it is being taken care of by someone that we have done some research on and we've seen, you know, what he has been able to do for us. We have confidence and we have a thirty day out. So that is why we were, we were suggesting for this to occur this evening. And I would just like to thank Jesse because he has really pulled us out of a very difficult space.
So before we ask anything, I still want to go around some council members if they want to come back and Jesse, you want to elaborate on some of your skills? We'll give you that opportunity. George?
Well, I'll tell you, I just got a text message. It's when he walked to the podium, it went off. And I guess it's been off. And that goes to what I'm saying. I think we ought to make sure that this thing works before we sign a contract. Now, that's just common sense. And it, I can't believe that people don't see it that way. I wouldn't buy a car unless it started and run and everything was in good shape. But twenty-six thousand dollar contract is something else now. You guys are going to do what you're going to do. But, you know, it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And I think we ought to realize that. It's not our dollars.
Okay, John?
I guess in seeing, there's actually no, I see the thirty day out, of course, which that brings comfort to me. Now, there's no actual term of the contract. It's just continues until either party wants out with thirty days for, you don't necessarily have to have a cause, correct?
Yeah, same as the previous contract.
Is that what the previous one was?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like, and I, I understand what George is saying. I, I get it, I've seen it, I've heard about it. And I, I mean, I feel like it's, we have a lot of new equipment that I think not only are we learning, but he's probably learning. And if this doesn't work out, then if we have to part ways, we give notice in the contract at that point and we go a different direction. But I think, you know, for someone else, if we do that, we have someone else is going to have to learn the equipment too. The one thing I would like to see as part of this contract is we, if, if we find a staff member within our staff, the we can train or, or learn also how this stuff functions just in case you're absent or something doesn't work. But we need someone within our staff to be able to have some knowledge of that equipment in there as well. I would ask that Jesse be required to teach that.
Okay. George?
Yeah, Jesse, I really appreciate you helping out.
Yeah, Jesse, um, I really appreciate you helping out. Can you tell me a little bit about your background? I mean, your, your, your skills that you have and, and kind of, kind of, for me, it's about listening to what you, what you've done in the past and what you're, what you've done.
Yeah. Um, yeah. So I actually, um, I have two associate degrees in photography, um, with where we're at. Uh, now, being in the digital age, so much of that has involved, um, just computers and, uh, troubleshooting, the electronic end of it. Um, and then on top of that, I've had a, a lot of volunteer experience, uh, in, in more of a live production setting, um, which is kind of where those two meet.
So as far as what you're doing now, is it self-taught or you already knew the system or did you have to grow into the one they have here?
Um, it, it's a combination of all of those. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
George? Uh, you know, my biggest heartburn about this, Mayor, is the way it was done. We are the city council. We are responsible for this city, but we were not consulted, notified, or sent to, or anything about this. It's just dumped in front of us to say, okay, pass it. I would like to see this council have some input on what's going on in this city. We're supposed to. We used to, but we don't anymore. And that's my biggest heartburn with this. We just, we just, it just thought in there and you guys vote for it. And it, it, it's disturbing to me.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments? Jim?
I guess the only, only other side of this is just that I've been asking some questions. I, I had people ask me too why it wasn't working. And I'd, I'd asked, I'd heard about Jesse. I, I had inquired. So it's, I don't feel like it was dumped on me. I understood what was going on. But, I don't know. I just say there's two sides to it.
George?
He, he just made the point. He knew what was going on. I didn't. I don't know who he was talking to, but somebody must have told him what was going on. They certainly never told me what was going on.
No, I said, I-
And that is part of the problem.
I was just saying that I inquired. No one told me. I, I, I initiated.
But we shouldn't have to inquire. We're not doing things the way this city council used to operate. And I'd like to see us get back to the old ways. You know, I, I was a, I was an open records officer for years here in the city when I was the chief of police. And I'll tell you, there's not a whole lot of secrets to City Hall. Personnel files, contract negotiations, but most everything we do is open record. We're supposed to be transparent, but we're not. We're not transparent. Just a couple of weeks ago, a council member resigned. I didn't, I wasn't told. I wasn't told. And then I got a deal and no reflection on Brandy at all. You know, I, I think she's a great choice. But I think that the council had a right to know that because if I resign, the public has a right to know that. I am an elected official. I have no secrets. City, the people out there have a right to know if I leave this position. But the people weren't told. We weren't told. There's no, not supposed to be any secrets here, but we're not being very transparent. And that's, that's what's bothering me. It's bothering me greatly.
Okay. Brandy?
So if we, if we don't do this, if we say no to this contract tonight, who does this in the interim? If, will Jesse still be here doing that? Is Jesse getting paid to do this now? So who will do this in the interim? And in the interim, how long will it take to put this proposal out there and get someone in here to do it if we go that route?
I think if we, uh, put a proposal together, put it out there, um, it could take four to six weeks, I think, to get something back. Um, if I was, you know, I, I don't want to speak for you, but if I were you and I've been in here helping out, doing that, and you want to approve tonight, I couldn't see that you would want to continue doing that, um, for us. And I would say we probably just want to have anybody running Channel Seven until we found somebody to fill that spot.
So there's a potential of going a couple of months without Channel Seven even being looked at? Then maybe another month or so before someone can get in here and fix it, correct?
I would, yeah, I would agree with that.
Fair statement?
If you can find someone.
Right.
It's, it's not a, it's not a, not a skill that's just laying out there for people. That could go to somebody. Bill, he came from the TV station, I believe, to help build the system. The system was brand new. Our concern, the reason we initiated it, going on this, to help build the system, the system was brand new. This building, we came into this building, you know, most regular thing, but we had two pages of logs that we found in the building. We're still trying to correct. There could still be flaws in the system. One of the reasons why it's urgent, the log, you have to work those things out. If we bring somebody in that wasn't part of, to help build that system, then where are we? Turning my big loaf.
That's because I called on you before Brandy.
Like I said, he's a race car driver and a mechanic. So if the car quits, he can get out and fix it. And that's what he's been able to do for the Channel Seven. Where our previous contractor, I think, would be, would be worse.
And I think you make a good point there because multiple times that our previous person, we had to go outside and hire somebody, um, and pay additional funds to try to get things worked out and fixed. Um, so, uh, Tom?
Well, I was going to say, we're sitting here for, I understand where the city's coming from. I understand exactly what Mr. Capps is saying. Uh, but we kind of have two scenarios that have happened recently. Person that was taking care of the, the website and all that stuff's no longer here. Uh, the person that was doing Channel Seven's no longer here and we have an interim. And the opportunity tonight to hire this person, whether he stays here for two months or twelve months, is up to him. Uh, short of that, we just shut everything off. So, uh, yeah. I like bids too, uh, but I understand where staff's coming from on this one since we've already got somebody in place that knows how it works. But in the future, I'd like to see bids too, so.
Okay. George?
Well, let's listen very carefully about Jack talking about him doing the microphones and all that stuff. We had a contractor that was supposed to do that. And I don't know who let him walk out of this building before he finished it. We've been paying him to do what was paid someone else to do or what we contracted with someone else to do. And they never finished the job, yet they were allowed to walk out of this building without finishing it.
Now, we made sure, George, that it worked when we were in that building. But it doesn't mean that it's just, just like this building, okay? Uh, we took occupancy of it because it all looked at it. But as time goes on, new things pop up that we weren't even aware it even existed. Like the police department. Two comes in last week, water's pouring down in one of these energy rooms. When we moved in the building, it, it didn't pour down, but after, after the contractor left, it sure did. And so we could expect possibly, I'm not saying it's going to, that some of this equipment can, can have problems. We had computer parts of a heating system, brand new heating system, went out. Uh, we had to, they had to order a new order to put in it. I mean, there's all kinds of things that can happen in there. But that's not the only reason. The only reason that, uh, I think that's part of the reason, the only thing you just discussed, Bill, I don't know that it's that bad. Your satisfaction with seeing Channel Seven and all of the media, you sit down for a line that could be run. And that's it all. And I understand, George, that you've got a very good point here.
Jack, I have sat here and I've told the mayor this. These guys have been here ever since we came into this building. And here we are, the tenth day of October, and Channel Seven is still not working properly. It's still not working after all this time. And I'm not going to say any more. Do what you're going to do.
Melvin?
Well, Jesse, do you have any handle on what's wrong with, uh, Cox?
Um, okay, so, yeah. I can, I can answer that question. Um, so originally, um, what was happening was the issues that we're having originally were more technical. Um, when we resolved those issues, we're, right now, why we're having issues tonight is, is because of scheduling conflict, conflicts in the software itself. Um, so, I mean, we've worked past this set of bugs and outside of, outside of, um, the live broadcast right now, Channel Seven has been running. Um, our Total Info, which is where the sports and the weather comes in and our, um, our reruns of council meetings have been running. Um, but yeah, I think we're just still revisiting some of the smaller issues, uh, with the new equipment and the new software.
Do you have a timeframe when, are we getting closer? I mean, within thirty days, what do you think, or?
I would certainly say that we are very close, yeah. Um, I can't say, with, with what happened originally, like, I do still have, um, fears about more technical issues coming up.
Sure.
Um, but, uh, I, I mean, I would say that, yeah, within the next month, there's no reason why we shouldn't be, you know, fully up and running and why our broadcast shouldn't go, um, uninterrupted.
Yeah. It, as I see it, between Bill and getting paid and some of these technical people, we're already paying this money out, it looks like. I- is that right? I mean, paying, uh, media people and, uh, paying Bill and we've already paid, we're paying this much money out anyway, basically?
Yes.
And, and we're kind of getting the word from Jesse that maybe in thirty days it'll be up and running?
If we have a technical issue and we don't have somebody like Jesse.
Right.
Now, uh, the IT rate is sixty-five dollars an hour. It's going to be a lot more than what we're paying with this contract if we have to bring in an IT person to, to try to get these little burps, and I call them burps. Now, it went to, to what George was saying. The original contractor, he had some problems. And Jesse caught some of these things. We would have probably never known. All we know that it wasn't working. And so we held his check up, uh, before, until he got everything up and working. That doesn't mean that, that the equipment is not going to have a possibility of still failing, which is not Jesse's fault, maybe not even the contractor's fault, because that's under a warranty and we'd have to have that, uh, correct. But I'm telling you, on that electronic equipment back there, if there's something electronically wrong with it, it's going to be sixty-five to eighty bucks an hour. And how many hours that's going to take, I have no idea.
And with hiring Jesse, we can eliminate that?
Yes, because Jesse has, has some of the skills and he knows somebody that will work with him. If, if he can't, he knows somebody that he can call upon that, uh, could give him some advice to help him out. Isn't that right, Jesse?
Mm-hmm.
You know somebody can do that?
Yeah. And I, um, I also am still, I still have the contact information for, um, McClellan Sound, who installed most of our equipment. Uh, and I did originally have some problems reaching out to one of their employees, um, which is where that, I mean, that slowed this process way down, uh, with some of the technical issues that we were having. And I can't say this for sure, um, because I guess I wasn't, he wasn't super clear with me on, on what his position with the company was. But I believe that the, the guy that I'm in touch with now, um, that I gave this last list of issues to, um, that have since been resolved, uh, is, I'm guessing, a supervisor or a manager there.
Well, I could see you being a great asset to this, but, uh, we haven't seen it work yet. So I, I understand where George is coming from, buying a car that's, you know, so. I don't know. Can you report back in thirty days or something and make sure it's up and running or, you think?
Uh, I think that's really proof in the pudding.
I mean, you know.
Yeah. Okay. John?
Yeah, I just, I guess Jesse kind of covered what I, when I pushed my button, what I was going to say. But, I mean, I think ideally we expect and the public expects the meetings to get broadcast on Tuesday nights during the meeting. But most importantly, they're being recorded and they're being rebroadcast. Um, you know, like I said, the expectation is that we get it, we get this working and we get it up and working. So, um, I know it's probably been frustrating for you as well as it is for, for us and for the public that, that would like to watch and while the meetings are actually going on. Um, but I, I'm ready to vote on this. And, uh, like I said, you know, we got thirty-day out on it as well as he does too. Um, the, the one thing I guess that I ask is, uh, in signing the contract, um, I ask that we put the stipulation in there that, uh, we'll have a, an on-staff employee that's trained up on the equipment, or we have that, that potential.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, Gary, you made a motion, right?
Yes.
And would you want to amend it to what John said, that we just add a training piece of staff?
I'll amend it as stated.
Jim, you second?
I'll second the amendment, amended motion.
Okay. Gary, did you have anything else to add?
No, I'd just like to make one comment. Uh, you know, sometimes we forget about all the things that have transpired since we came into this building. And, uh, we had some hardware issues coming on that we had to wait quite a long time to get that hardware in place before we could even think about having Channel Seven. So I don't want us to forget that not all this time has been spent troubleshooting. You have to actually get the hardware in place before you can troubleshoot it. So.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
George, was that you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that motion passes six-two. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, item E, which is consider a bid for restriping Air Capital Drive and Beaumont Street to be paid out of the 2017 special street and highway capital outlay. Jack?
Well, Rick take this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, asking council's consideration for, uh, restriping, uh, two streets. Those are, uh, Air Cap Drive and Beaumont west of Air Cap. Uh, our initial inspection of this indicated that, uh, the existing striping, the markings on the road now are about fifty percent worn or faded. So the visibility on that's greatly reduced. Uh, we did get a bid on restriping that, painting that, uh, which includes about two thousand millennial feet of, uh, four-inch double yellow, fifty feet of twenty-four-inch white, which is your stop blocks at the intersection of 61st and Air Cap and also at the intersection of Beaumont and Air Cap. And also just shy a thousand feet of, uh, six-inch white skips. The last time this was striped was 2011, so it's been about six years since that's done. And, um, we're trying to beat the cold weather. The temperature has to be a certain degree and I don't know what that is before that can be applied. So I'd ask for council's consideration for five thousand four hundred and fifty for a TCS for this service.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Rick? Melvin?
Was this the only bid we could get or?
Yes, it is.
These the only people does it or?
There, it's not the only ones that does it. It's hard to get a bid. It's going to be more time-consuming for us to get another bid on this, on this small project. We first started looking at this last week on this and, uh, we're concerned about the temperature on this, so we wanted to move forward. We're just concerned that it's going to get too cold.
Is this one of the worst streets there that has the striping going on it or?
Yes, it is. Broadway is noticeable, but we may be doing something.
Yeah.
With Broadway next year, so we didn't.
Sure.
We didn't want to do that and then cover that up.
Okay. Thank you. Tom?
I was looking at the bid, and is this paint or, or plastic striping?
It's paint.
Thermoplastic could be three times that amount. And with the dirt that's coming off of the, the truck parking area, um, we've used thermoplastic, but that, that grit just wears that thermoplastic right off.
To kind of follow up on what Jack said, this is more noticeable the further north you get on Air Cap.
Very good, Tom.
Yeah.
Okay. John?
Uh, I know there was some discussion, did I miss a motion already?
No, there's just questions.
I'll make a motion we approve, um, as presented, for $5,450 to traffic control services for this said project.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 8-0. Thank you, Rick. The next item on the agenda is item F, which is consider a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain land by the city of Park City, Kansas, to Murdoch Properties. Uh, Jack or Doug, did you?
You want to take it, Doug, or?
Mayor and council, this is, uh, pursuant to the lease agreement that the city has with the IRBs issued for Murdoch Properties. Uh, the, the tenant, which is Murdoch Properties, has the ability to purchase unimproved land that's part of the lease and part of the IRB issue. Uh, and that's what, uh, uh, Murdoch Properties and, and, uh, Mr. Rebelli would like to do. When that happens, then it's necessary for the, the holder of the bonds in the city to, to consent to that and then to release that land from the IRB. In, in, uh, in my opinion, this has a zero impact on the city fiscally. Uh, it does not have any negative impact on the IRB or the city's position, uh, as the owner of the land under that IRB. So I would recommend that the city adopt the resolution as submitted by bond counsel.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Okay. Jim?
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of certain land by the city of Park City to Kansas, uh, Park City, Kansas, to Murdoch Properties.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Gary Aldrich?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
Okay. That resolution passes 8-0.
That is Resolution 970-2017.
Thank you, Daniella. That brings us to item G, which is consider the transfer of real property located west of Hillside from 61st Street to 69th Street, approximately 80 acres, to the city of Park City, Kansas Land Bank. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up on the screen, you can see the outline of the 80 acres that we're talking about. Uh, this starts the land bank, uh, process. Doug can jump in and fill you in a little better than I can on the land bank.
This was land that we accepted a couple of meetings ago from the developers. The intention is to get it in a position where we can market it. Um, and what, and then approximately two years ago, the governing body adopted, uh, an ordinance to establish a land bank. And one of the beauties of the land bank is a situation like this where the city can convey the property to the Board of Trustees of the land bank, which is all of you, uh, coincidentally. And once that's done, then while the land is being held, uh, there are several things that can happen. The, the, one immediate advantage of that is that there are no ad valorem taxes assessed against the property when it's being held by the land bank. Um, and then in the future, the land bank has the ability to reshuffle special assessments, uh, and to more equally spread them over the property in a way that would make, that make the property, uh, more desirable for a developer to come in and purchase all or a portion of that. Uh, there are other things too, but, uh, this is the first step in getting the property out of the city's hands and into the hands of the land bank where, under state statute, we have a number of, of desirable options in order to make this land more, uh, desirable for a developer.
Okay. Thank you, Doug. It pays sometimes when we do things a couple of years ago that, uh, we might get to reap the rewards of. Tom?
I'm going, we, we discussed this a few weeks ago and accepted it. And so I'm gonna make a motion tonight that we, uh, accept the transfer of real property located Hillside 61st Street to 69th Street, approximately 80 acres, to the city of Park City Land Bank.
Okay. Melvin?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 8-0. That brings us to governing body reports, and we'll start with Jim.
I just wanted to thank the city employees that were working Saturday with the tree recycling. Our neighborhood took advantage of that and they were extremely helpful and we all very much appreciated that.
Okay. It's Brandy? George?
I hate deals luck tonight. I feel bad for Jesse that he was exposed to that. I blame this council for it, or the administration and the council. This could have been prevented. Uh, but, when it's forced on us and you bring the man up here and we haven't even discussed it, that's not fair to him and it's not fair to us. But I do have the backbone to do what the taxpayers elected me to do. And that's, that's too bad. I, I really feel bad about it. I feel bad for Jesse. He shouldn't have been exposed to that. But it's not his fault and it's certainly not mine. But I, I think it's time that this, you know, there's three, it, it's three separate but equal branches of government. And I think the administration of this city is forgetting that the legislative is equal. We're equal to administrative. They have no right to keep stuff from us. And I am gonna be vocal about it. That's what the taxpayers pay me to do. And I will. And I've been listening to them, they've been talking to me. They're, they're very unhappy about several things. So I will speak out. So I'll go.
Tom?
I don't have anything tonight.
Melvin?
I'm good.
Gary?
Nothing tonight.
George?
Yeah, I'd like everybody to know too, our, uh, Fall Festival's coming up on October 28th from 4:00 to 7:00 in Hatman Clay Park. So those folks, uh, get ready, you have a lot of events going on that day. Hay rack rides, free pumpkins for the kids, uh, so there's a lot of activities going on, so come out and enjoy that. Thank you.
John?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Sir?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Sir, a second?
A second.
All right. We'll give it to George.
I'll second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes 8-0. So, I'll go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Land Board of Trustees. Daniella, did you want to call the roll for this?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Here.
Gary Aldrich?
Here.
Melvin Kerr?
Here.
Tom Jones?
Here.
George Capps?
I'm adjourned.
Brandy Bailey?
Here.
Jim Schrader?
Here.
I require a Ms. Present, Your Honor.
All right. We'll come to the first item on the, uh, agenda for the Land Board of Trustees, which is consider the acceptance of the deed from the city of Park City, Kansas, transferring approximately 80 acres of land in the city of Park City, Kansas, generally located west of Hillside between 61st Street and 69th Streets. Doug, I don't know if you, if you want to take this and just kind of recoup as the Board of Trustees for the Land Bank, what we're doing.
Yes, it's, uh, uh, the deed, when, minutes ago, when you were sitting as the governing body, you approved a deed transferring the property to the Land Board of Trustees, which is the land bank. You have to, as the land bank, then, accept that, uh, to acknowledge that, that you, you will accept that land. You do have the right, uh, to sit and to not take land in, I mean, it's your decision. But, uh, in order to affect this and get the land in the land bank, you need to take action by just a vote of the Board of Trustees to accept the deed that the city just, uh, just authorized, uh, minutes ago.
Okay. Tom?
Uh, since I made the motion to accept the land, is it appropriate for me to make the motion to move it into the land bank? Would that be a conflict?
No, you're separate, you're totally separate right now. This is a separate meeting and there's no conflict.
I would make that motion.
Gary? I'll second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 8-0. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? John?
Make a motion we adjourn?
And Gary?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.